We will reconvene this meeting of the City Council with the public hearing and go to the public. We're starting. Thank you. So if you want to read the first few names off again.
The first names, the first speakers, as I call your name, make your way up to the podium. Mary Riley, to be followed by Richard Goldberg, to be followed by Mary Lou Lamb.
We switch places. My name is Mary Lou Lamb, and I would like to actually present these to the clerk to I'm on the Board of Directors for the Oceanside Manor HOA at the community of Pacifica.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Mary Lou Lamb, L-A-M-B, in 4523 Dawn Lane, Oceanside. Thank you for the opportunity to address the City Council regarding a concern our community has on the issue of soil destabilization that might affect the area surrounding the Emerald Ridge proposed construction. As the city of Oceanside is aware, numerous geological studies are on file that indicate a moderate to high presence of landslides and expansive soils. Annual precipitation in years of high rainfall elevate groundwater levels which exacerbates the risk. The community of Pacifica, which comprises 223 residences, was built in 1976 and is underlaid by a large ancient landslide complex, a portion of which became active in approximately April of 1978. In the summer of '82, nine homes were demolished by landslide movement. In an effort to control groundwater, our HOA is now responsible for maintaining a 1,100-foot-long, nine-foot diameter drainage tunnel that was built under North Sundown Lane, running east to west, 16 hydrogers constructed in '87 and '88, and an additional 11 wells built in 1990 that are also required to pump water from our property to the tunnel. The HOA employs a geotechnical company to monitor groundwater levels biannually at a cost of several thousand dollars. Additionally, the HOA is currently working on a project required by the city of Oceanside which will pump groundwater from Lake Boulevard through a pipe installed along South Sundown to a new connection. The city requires that we measure this pumped water flow also biannually, and we bear the financial burden for ongoing effects from the landslide. Adjacent communities of Pacifica Hermosa and Green Valley were also--
Can you wrap it up, please?
Yeah, I am. Were also impacted by earth displacement. Consequently, our concern is in regard to continued destabilization of this area and the potential for increased groundwater issues. Clearly, the residents, not the developers, are the ones who are faced with future problems, and we ask that you, the City Council, make certain that current geological findings conclude there will be no--
Please conclude.
--future impact to the surrounding area.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you could please refrain from clapping after every speaker. You want to clap after the last speaker, that's fine.
Mary Riley, retired RN. I live in Pacifica, 4221 Dawn Lane. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to address the issues for all of our seniors who could not come out at night, that don't come out at night any longer. We have half of our population is in their 80s and their 90s. Some of them are on walkers, some of them walk their dogs on a leash at a great struggle. What's my point? My point is safety and quality of life. There are five surrounding communities here, single-family homes, with people walking, struggling to walk their dogs. They use our street, Sky Haven, for exercise. They can't get across the street because of the traffic to come to the clubhouse, not without taking their life in their hands. Seniors are a vulnerable population. We all know that they're subject to risks and falls. That's the number-one injury. The dust, dirt, and noise that will be created by this project will be harmful to seniors with respiratory problems. Some of these people only have their yards, the sunlight, and the birds at the feeder left. That's all they've got, and this project is going to take two to three years with all this dirt and noise. But that's okay. They can spend the rest of their lives in their homes. That's not fair. We need to think about this population. I'm sorry I'm so emotional, but these are my neighbors and my friends. The project has a tot lot and a parking lot. Kids are going to be out on their bikes, skateboards, they're going to explore the neighborhoods. That's what kids do. We're not against kids. But when you put those people, those kids, with people walking in walkers on the sidewalks, struggling to walk their dogs, riding their little wheelchairs with their schnauzers running alongside, that's not a safe situation.
If you could wrap it up, please.
All of these properties have one way in and one way out. This is the Los Angeles Times. In the next wildfire, seniors will again be most--
If you could please wrap it up. Thank you.
Paradise does need to address the vulnerability of seniors. You need--
Thank you.
--to consider this. Oh, and one of my, one of my neighbors asked me--
Thank you. If you could call the next speaker, please.
--to please tell you he's 90, we still vote.
Next speaker is Richard Goldberg, to be followed by Stephen Harvey, to be followed by Betty Filner.
Okay. My name is Rich Goldberg. My wife and I live at Green Valley along the creek. If this project is built with all the water that will be added to the storm drain, which then goes into the creek, our banks will have serious erosion, making our homes quite unstable and in jeopardy of becoming houseboats instead of manufactured homes. When we had those heavy rains this past winter and approximately, and approximately two years ago, because of poor planning years ago from the Costco development, water overflowed our banks and rose precipitously, coming up those banks and the steps close to decks and homes. The banks along the creek have already eroded badly because of bad and nearsighted decisions of the past. You may not care about the decision today because you will be long gone when the consequences of a poor decision come about. You will not suffer those consequences. You don't really care. To a great extent, you do not care about the effects of a bad decision because it will not affect you. This whole meeting may be a show to try and let people think that you want public response when you already know what you will do. No matter what logic, proof, or expert testimony we give, you will do what you want because you do not care. My feeling. You will not be around to suffer those results. I'm not getting into the noise, traffic, et cetera, other people have or will testify to that situation. I'm talking about what will happen with the creek. This will only add to the problems of the homeless, the garbage, and the erosion on both sides of the creek. Then the trees will lose their rootage and eventually fall. Who's going to take care of that? Wildlife and game? Ha-ha! Technically, we're not even allowed to move a twig or a rock, or theoretically be fined, be fined. Also, you are Oceanside. We live in Vista. So, do you really care? Because it will not be your problem. Since we live in Vista, if we contact you, you, Oceanside, will then tell us we have to call Vista because that's where we live. In addition, we have learned that you have absolved yourself from any problems that may occur.
If you could wrap it up, please.
So you can reap the benefits, take no responsibilities. Great for you, terrible for us. No matter what the fallout, you walk away whistling down the yellow brick road. Thank you.
Next speaker, next speaker is Stephen Harvey, to be followed by Betty Filner, to be followed by Rita Bryan.
Ladies and gentlemen, please do not clap. You recognize you are extremely passionate. We support your passion.
Thank you.
But please, you will be here all night. We all have that time, right?
My name is Steve Harvey. I live in Green Valley Mobile Home Park. I'm also a taxpayer here in Oceanside. We, my wife and I, have timeshares right down here at the Southern California Beach Club. So you're talking to a taxpayer right now. This package that I gave you, I'm going to go through quickly. The first one is a two-page document that I sent you electronically on Monday. Thank you Deputy Mayor Feller for acknowledging that you got it and appreciating what I said. The second item on it has to do with the Oceanside Manor and/or Pacifica settlement that came in 1990. Nothing has been mentioned about this. This whole hillside is tied in together. We, here's a video, 16 minutes' worth of that project building that tunnel that's been referred to already. If you haven't watched it or you don't know about it, you need to watch it. Number two, we get this book in Green Valley all the time. It's a dewatering issue. 3,000 gallons of water go into that tunnel daily. The groundwater and landslides on this property are absolutely unacceptable. In your own documentation, the reports state that you could re-trigger that landslide. Those of you that are holding that, those signs I passed out, if you'll stick them up for a second, those documents there are what was in that first thing that I gave you. The third thing is an item that was shown on the screen, and if you notice, two of the buildings are being built on the old road. It's been projected that you're doing us a favor building this road. You need the road to build on, not, you're going to spend a million dollars on a new road just to make us happy? You need the property. You had to go to Vista to get permission. Again, zoning, it's been discussed. There's no three-story buildings anywhere close to me other than Tri-City Hospital and their addition, and Cedar Park Urgent Care. And then the last document I gave you has to do with the noise factor.
If you could wrap it up, please.
Eighteen months this project will go or longer, and we have people that live 50 feet from what you're going to be doing. I did a three-minute construction beep-beep-beep for you if you want to hear what it's going to be like living there.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Next speaker is Betty Filner, to be followed by Rita Bryan, to be followed by David De La Torre.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you could get in line and stand in so that--
Yeah, we have two podiums, so as I call your name, please line up at either one.
Good evening.
Betty Filner?
I'm Betty Farin, but I do write sloppy. Thank you very much, everyone, for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm going to address the traffic issues. Can you hear me? Okay. Traffic at, on Sunset has become almost unbearable. I used to drive 110 miles round trip every day in Los Angeles, which was, I thought, was bad, but coming out of the park at certain times of the day, excuse me, can be ridiculous. You can sit there for four to five minutes. If a car makes the light at Hacienda and/or Plaza, they can be doing 50 to 55 by the time they pass us. So, as someone mentioned, that when you get older, it's a little bit harder to judge. It's a wonder that, whoops, it's a wonder that more accidents haven't happened. I would like to address the straightening out of Sunset really quickly. That is going to put that street, I said build a bridge to go over Santiago, because it's, they're not going to slow down, they're going to speed up to try to make the traffic lights, both at the freeway and at Sky Haven. So I hope that you will take all of this into consideration and really think it through before you place your votes. Thank you very much.
My name is Rita Bryan, and I'm reading a speech that my neighbor wanted to give but was called away unexpectedly. She addresses the traffic also. The traffic studies that you did and the traffic engineer that spoke and everything seem to think that going by whatever metrics they're using, everything is safe, but the entrance that we have, which goes on Sunset Drive, is used by the parents of schoolchildren in eight different schools. Tri-City Christian, Belmonte Vista Montessori, Coast Christian, Montessori School of Oceanside, Lake Elementary, Breeze Hill Elementary, Madison Middle School, and Rancho Buena Vista High School. They go, the parents and the students drive down our road to avoid traffic and lights that are on Melrose. We're a ways shortcut, so we have way more traffic than what the statistics are saying. And anytime that you come during high-traffic area and you see all the cars that are going by and people have to go right because they can't make a left turn on a one-way entrance, our only entrance, that is really a concern for, as we said, elderly traffic. But it's a concern for everybody because we back up to Costco during Christmas and Easter. You can't get to 78. Costco traffic blocks everything, goes in the block, and we're, you know, stuck. It comes all the way out to where our entrance is. Adding 48 more units will not make anything safer. Whether you change the road or not, the fact is that this is a bypass used by a lot of people every day, and it's just not safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is David De La Torre, to be followed by Anita R. Megg, to be followed by Howard Killian.
Good evening. My name's Dave De La Torre. I live above the project on Bush Drive. I appreciate the opportunity you guys have given us. From the intersection at Sunset and Sky Haven, the building pads are going to be approximately 40 feet above the pavement, and the buildings are another 30 feet tall from that to the rooftop, and then there's going to be walls on the top of the roof as well. So therefore, as far as I can see, we're going to be looking at 70 feet, more or less, actually more, to the rooftops of these proposed buildings from the intersection. That's what I see. I'm thinking, right now, I'm looking, I'm driving down the road, and all I'm looking at is 70-foot-tall buildings. It's not going to be appropriate for the site. What we're talking about is a diminished quality of life. All of us came out tonight to demonstrate that this project does not fit in with our community. It's a relatively serene environment, somewhat rural in areas, and traffic is getting bad. The project will truly only make things worse. U.S. City Council members have the obligation to deny this project on the simple basis that this project's design does not fit with the surrounding area and the risk involved in the undertaking of developing on landslide material, as well as the reduced safety involved in steepening the road and increasing the speed limit. They spoke about a stockpile on the, on the existing site. It just so happens that less than, that the dirt came from the landslide 1,300 feet away. So that dirt, that existing pad that's been put there, it came from the existing landslide 1,300 feet away. I just thought that was rather ironic. I work in construction, and in grading, when you hit, when you hit water, it changes the whole concept of the grading process. And all hell breaks loose and just makes things a lot more difficult, and I have a feeling it's going to impact Sunset Road for a much longer period of time than we, than you guys may suspect. Thank you.
Anya Megg? Please make your way now.
My name is Anita Mog. I live at 4225 Dawn Lane, Oceanside, California. It's Pacifica. I'm 89 years old, and I've lived in Pacifica for 30 years. It has changed a great deal. We used to have less traffic, of course, and my main concern is the fact that if this project goes through, I think they're going to have at least three bedrooms in those homes, and there'll be children that will be having to have places to ride their bikes, use skateboards, or go roller skating, or whatever they do. And we have a very quiet community. We walk very slow, as this has been said before, but we have a nice park, and quite often we find people walking on our private streets and say that they feel that this is a nice place for them to take a stroll, and it's all private. You know, we pay for our own roads and care for them, and our streetlights and everything else. I think, I was glad, I was one of the people that attended the first meetings. It seemed to me like there were more than 31 people. I don't remember a count being taken or anybody signing anything, but I'm very definitely opposed to the project. Even two stories would have been too much. Three is more than, and for all those steps for going up to the bedroom areas and everything, they're, they're not going to be getting seniors in there. They'll be young, active families with maybe, you know, with several children. So anyway, I just want to say that I'm still opposed to the project. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Howard Killian, to be followed by Pam Hubbard, to be followed by Patricia Moore.
Hi, I'm Howard Killian. Honorable Mayor, City Council members. The traffic study is out of date. That's a catch-22. It's been a couple of years. The traffic congestion has significantly increased in the last two years, especially the last year. Now in the afternoon, it is common to have to wait two minutes to turn left from Sky Haven onto Emerald Drive. This means that despite the mitigation efforts projected, including the lessening of the curve, widening the traffic light at Sky Haven and Emerald Sunset, and the turn lanes, entry and exiting from Emerald Ridge is going to be dicey on this curve at the bottom of a steep hill. If the project is built, people probably will get injured and maybe get killed. Thank you.
My name is Pam Hubbard. I live at 4256 Shadow Lane, Oceanside, which is located in Pacifica. I've lived there 21 years, and for the past 10 years, I've been walking along Sky Haven from one end to the other, and I don't care what the traffic engineers say. The traffic has increased at least fivefold, especially with the project behind Kohl's and Walmart. We have seen, seen an increase, and if this project goes forward, the same thing will happen. This project, those people, it's right here. All their traffic-- Is going to come back this way to go to the Walmart and Albertson's, and then they're going to be going back there. We are senior citizens. We cannot even cross one side of Sky Haven to the other. We have one pedestrian crossing in approximately six to eight city blocks, and the city just came out recently and designated it, it was not a crossing, and they had to put up two pedestrian signs. The rest of this area, which is about three-fifths of it, has no crossing whatsoever. So what do we do? Take our life in our hands when we cross the street. We need a second crossing somewhere along North Sundown, but if this project goes through, we're in trouble. Thank you very much.
Our next speakers are Patricia Moore, to be followed by Joe Freshman, to be followed by William Sherman.
As he said, I'm Patricia Moore. I live in Rancho Calavero Mobile Home Park and I'm also Secretary of our HOA, and I have something a little different to say. This area that I live in now should be a feather in a cap, a crown on the heads of Oceanside, because what this county needed was low-to-middle-income housing. The Emerald Ridge development is anything but that. I live in Rancho Calavero, and some of these homes are selling for over $300,000. I live there because I couldn't afford to live in those condos. I am a clinical psychologist with a graduate degree and worked for the county of San Diego. I couldn't afford a condo. That's why I live in a mobile home park now. And so what they're talking about doing is erecting a large multistructure thing that will take two to three adults in each of those, those homes or condos, whatever you want to call them, to afford them. Now, what they're doing is converting a good low-to-middle-income place, especially for seniors, that we can afford, and they're trying to convert it to a high-income place for people, which is not what the county needs anyway. They're all wanting low-to-middle-income housing. That is not low-to-middle-income housing at all. And so that's one of my objections to the whole thing. Also, I am a senior. I'm 72, and I, but we didn't get, we didn't get noticed about this because we do not own our property underneath of our mobile homes. We own the mobile homes and not the property, so we got no notice. And also, they didn't include Rancho Calavero because it's outside of whatever this 1,500-square-feet thing is, which is ridiculous, because on a good day when my fibro, my algia, and my arthritic foot aren't hurting, I can walk up to that corner. So that's a bunch of baloney that is not going to impact Rancho Calavero and some other areas right, right by there. Thank you.
Joe Freshman?
Hello, my name is Joe Freshman. I live at Green Valley Mobile Home Park. I live on the far western edge, which is west of both of the landslide areas. I can tell you right now that there is a great deal of water subsidence in, through that hill, because I live at the bottom of the hill. If you'd like to come over to my house, I'd be more than glad to show you where there's land subsidence and where water flows and then anything you want. To the developers, your project's great for someplace else. We don't want it here. I'm just very upset about the fact that you would actually put something there where you know that it is landslide-prone, ancient landslides. We've also had discussions here about some in the '70s and the '80s. I'm concerned about the fact that there's going to be more, and there's going to be nothing more than a, this place is just a total geological disaster in this area as far as water goes. I would suggest that you guys hire somebody from UCSD, such as, let's say, Dr. Abbott, who is a geologist, and have this area reexamine for its ability to be able to maintain structures of this size and ability, and also address the drainage problems that are, have supposedly been addressed, but I don't think are adequate. I, I think it's just not going to work. It's, it's a bad project, and I'm just, I'm just disgusted with the whole thing. That's it.
Our next speakers are William Sherman, to be followed by Armila Arroyo, to be followed by Richard Megg.
My name is William Sherman. I live at 857 Bush Drive Vista. My property, which I live on with my family, is directly adjacent to this project. It is, will be directly across a small chain-link fence from the project, and so I wanted to quickly stand up and provide my perspective. It's similar to these folks, but a little different because, again, I represent a family that's going to be staring at this project for the next few years while it's built. I imagine we'll be getting very intimate with it as it grows there with, you know, right next to the area that my, my children play and we reside at. Clearly, I have concerns about this destroying our view, destroying this small bit of wildlife area that's right there. May not be a big concern to folks, but it is to me. It's certainly not an appropriate building for the area. We have a number of multi-acre residential lots adjacent to this. Certainly not appropriate, given that perspective. I'm a professional engineer myself, a builder of slightly different types of projects. I'm very busy. I've barely had time to tune into this. I would like to point out that despite being a landowner here, I didn't receive any notice about this project initially. I had to find out from my neighbors. I then made a point and took my time to go to the meetings as much as I could. I believe I went to all but one, voiced my opinion at those meetings. People are busy. There was a good turnout at those meetings, I thought, considering that people are very busy, and those meetings were held at very inconvenient times. And I would just like to say-- And I would just like to say, I was shocked when the council voted to approve this last time we were standing here, because all of the same information was put out in front of them, and it's, this project clearly has technical issues. It clearly is not appropriate for the site. I can understand voting on a project that has technical issues like that, but I cannot understand voting on a project that is very obviously going to put people in danger, given the road situation. And that's my main concern. Thank you very much.
Members of the Oceanside City Council, my name is Armila Arroyo, and I live at twenty-one-thirty-Sunset Drive in the city of Vista, and I want to thank you for allowing me to be here, and also, I want to thank your staff, because I did receive multiple letters, and I became aware of this dilemma. But I want to be very clear that you are not my elected representatives, and I am not your constituent. And it's very frustrating, because ultimately, your decision is going to impact my life and hundreds of other retirees who live in the area. I know that's not your fault, but I'm hoping that you will take into consideration the people who live in Vista. And Mayor Wise, I know it's very frustrating for you, because you have to listen to us for more than two minutes, but when you're frowning and looking at us like, gee, hurry up. I'm defending my livelihood. I'm defending where I live and where I have retired. I too, as an elected official in another city, I too worked for the Senate for fifteen years. I know what it's like to have constituents and to be representative. Please be more considerate of the people that you do not represent.
Next speaker is Richard Mang, to be followed by Maria Saco or Psycho? I apologize. Psycho, thank you, and followed by Cindy Stillman.
Good evening, Council. My name's Richard Mang. I'm at nine-thirty-seven Bush Drive, and I'd just like to address one portion of the construction site. My request is this. Along the southern edge of the condo site is a swath of undisturbed land that developers in the blueprint decided not to, not to do anything on for a number of reasons. It's approximately a hundred feet wide, and I would appreciate it if we could please designate this as dedicated open space and kept as a green belt to ensure no unforeseen development proposals be attempted in the future by the developer that purchases this project. That's my request.
Short and sweet. Hi, my name is Maria Sacco. I live at eight-one-eight Bush Drive, and again, I'm not an Oceanside resident, so thank you very much for hearing us out. A project on this site, Richard doesn't want one, but it would be great, but not this project. This project is, have any of you pulled up even Google Maps and looked at the land on this and what surrounds it? There's no three-story buildings even close by. There's nothing there. The traffic, the data can be spun any way you ever want to spin data. That always happens. Have any of you driven Sunset Road daily? I drive that road daily, from Melrose to Bush Drive and even down to Skyhaven. The road is already torn to shreds. It's not a very good road in the first place. They're talking about expanding one small part of Sunset. Along with that, the Emerald Overpass has never, I don't think anyone here said a word about it. That Emerald Overpass is already so dangerous, it's ridiculous. People run those lights constantly, because while you're driving through there, you're looking at three more lights down the road. So they see a light two away from them, and they think, oh, it's green, and they run the light. My boyfriend almost got hit just last night. It's ridiculous, the way that this goes. And with Costco right there, it's a madhouse. It can take you ten minutes to get from one side of Emerald Overpass to the other side of Emerald Overpass. That's how much traffic is already there, and you're talking about adding at least another hundred cars with forty-eight units and two people in each one. Notifications, I think I got two. I own my property. I did get some. I went to the meetings, voiced concerns, and here we are. Thank you very much.
Cindy Stillman, to be followed by Casey Harvey.
I'm Cindy Stillman. I live on Sunset Drive. I live where the wonderful three-way stop sign is that no one stops at. And my concern is the compounded traffic that builds up east of where they're going to make that curve. Part of the problem that I see is that maybe a hundred feet from the curve, all of a sudden it becomes county. And I'm in the unincorporated area, where one side across the street from me is Carlsbad, the other side is Oceanside, behind me is Vista. When these accidents happen at my house, in my driveway, nobody knows who to come do anything about it. So I was born and raised here. My family has had that property since the fifties. The last time I came to a city council meeting was to fight the Broadmoor development that Oceanside passed. Oceanside's very good about passing things with no regard for what happens to people next to that area. So you really need to think about people just beside Oceanside. Thank you.
Waiting for a light to go on. Thanks. We as citizens have it in writing from a Mr. Madera that Oceanside is putting in this proposal, I'm assuming this is to whoever purchases it, that you will not take any legal responsibility for future damage from landslides or groundwater damage. I find this extremely hard to believe, but it's morally unacceptable. Thank you.
We have no more speaker slips. Is there anyone else who would like to address this issue? Seeing one more?
My name's Dennis Schwander. I live at five-zero-four-two Nighthawk Way in the Ocean Hills area. I utilize this street, Sunset Drive, quite often to go to the freeway and go to that direction to get into Oceanside. I also had thirty-four years with Orange County Fire Department, and I responded to the Laguna Nigal landslide in nineteen ninety-six, I think it was, and we had, I think it was a hundred and some unit condominium at the base, a toe of a hill, kind of the same as this was. And when the slide went, it basically turned the condominium complex completely over. It just rolled it, and we had to evacuate and rescue about a hundred residents. So I don't know enough about geology to know if this could happen there, but it's a scary deal if there is a slide, and that was from an old slide that they hadn't even discovered back in the sixties or something like that. So just want to let you know, that may not be the right place to put some buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll close the public input.
Yeah, my name's Bruce Jensen. I manage Green Valley Mobile Home Park, and we've been there for fourteen years in August this year. We've seen a lot of activity happening on Sunset Drive, and that concerns me a lot about the project. My window in my office faces Sunset Drive, so I see what goes on there pretty much when I'm in the office all the time. And we've had a number of accidents there that have been pretty severe. One just in the last three weeks that blocked Sunset from both directions, so it had to be shut down. People use that for a racecourse. I think a lot of people don't know what it means to take it easy. So I'm concerned about our safety of our residents. We're fifty-five and older. Average age is probably sixty-five to seventy, and a lot of people with problems with their health don't get around too well. So we just, I just want to concur with what's been said here tonight. I think we need to, hope you'll take all this into consideration when you decide what you want to do there. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. And with that, we will close the public input portion. Councilmember Rodriguez?
First, I would like to thank the Oceanside residents, Vista residents, Carlsbad residents, and county residents for coming out and voicing your opinion. We welcome you here in Oceanside. We welcome your voice and your input as neighbors and impacted residents. And so I'm about to go into some of my thinking with regards to my decision on this project, and it's my, obviously, my own opinion, and my colleagues will be able to give theirs. I swore an oath to uphold the United States Constitution and the California Constitution and the zoning ordinances here within the city of Oceanside, and I highly respect private property rights of owners. And this private property owner bought a property. He followed all of the appropriate channels. We have an extremely competent staff with the city of Oceanside that I appreciate and I trust, and they've worked really, really hard to present facts, so that it helps our decision-making up here, because we're not the experts. And we have a private property owner who's applied. They went through the correct channels. Our planning commission unanimously supported and approved this project. So what we have before us is the epitome of a private property owner not moving forward on any variances. They've spent a lot of time, a lot of money, and a lot of resource on moving forward on their private property rights to go before a city to move on a development. So I don't really have anything else to fall back on, other than, out of respect, local neighbors that do not want a property in their backyard, not in my backyard. Outside of that, I don't, I don't have anything else to go off of. If we make a decision, if I make a decision as a leader in representing my city to deny a project like this, what message does that send to the development community? We are in a housing crisis. We are in limited supply on a housing crisis, and the way to improve housing crisis, the way to improve...
Thank you very much. Please let him finish his comments.
The way to improve housing crisis is we need more supply. And we have a private property owner that I wish you came before us with double the amount of units than what you've proposed. We need houses. We need units. This is the epitome of what we need in our city, and to approach housing affordability, we need units.
You've had your opportunity to speak. Please let the council have theirs.
So again, thank you all for your comments. I move motion to approve this project, and I have no further comments.
Councilmember Keim?
Again, I want to say thank you to everyone who came out tonight. I know it wasn't easy. It's a drive. I want to address one thing first. I heard a comment earlier that we won't be here to deal with the consequences. You don't drive this. So I, I've lived in Oceanside almost my entire life. I live off Lake Boulevard, and I drive this road every day to and from City Hall. So I'm very familiar with this road. I've also spent a lot of time there in the police department dealing with traffic incidences. So I'm very familiar with issues of that, of the curve of Skyhaven, where it hits Sunset and it turns into Emerald. So I'm very familiar with the area and the makeup of the neighborhood. So I just want to, I will be there. I will deal with any consequences of this project. So first, I want to, and I have a question for staff. I have a concern with what occurred during the planning commission meeting. So, you know, members of the planning commission opined on the project, and they didn't feel it approved, or it had met with neighborhood compatibility, and they said they didn't have any ability to address that issue. Could they have addressed that during the planning commission process?
Councilmember Keim, so to, part of the entitlements for this project include a development plan, which requires five findings. One of those findings deals with compatibility. Had the planning commission made those findings, that it wasn't compatible, they could have directed staff to come back with a resolution denying the project based on incompatibility.
So I, in a situation like this, in a decision like this, I think it's a difficult decision. You have to look at it from both sides and be fair, and I think that it's a, it might not be the perfect project for everyone. I don't, every project I approve is not going to be what I would have designed myself or what I think is perfect, and I understand the concerns of the community. I, you know, I have, and I can see exactly where you're coming from. I also see where the developer's coming from. They're coming in at a quarter of what the possible units could be. So if you did the math, you could technically fit over two-hundred-and-twenty units in there, and, you know, they're going in, I believe, at forty-eight. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Madera?
Councilmember Keim, yes, correct. They, they're asking for forty-eight units.
One more question, too. Was there a previous project that didn't go forward that had a higher number of units?
Councilmember Keim, yes. In the mid-eighties, there was a project approved for a two-hundred-and-twenty-unit apartment complex at this project site, but never moved forward.
Okay. Again, I share your concerns. I also see things from the applicant's standpoint, and I, it's a difficult position, so, thank you.
Sanchez?
Thank you, and I want to thank everyone for coming and speaking and giving us all of your, sharing with us your experiences. It's pretty obvious why there has never been a project here. My first question was, how the hell could it have been zoned for this high density, because it's definitely not compatible with the surrounding community? I am very concerned about the traffic safety. I will be really honest, I don't go to that Costco, because I have a very hard time getting, you know, over without thinking someone's going to hit me. And I know that there have been a lot of accidents there. To have that many, and in truth, the owner can build from zero to whatever. The factor about compatibility is very, very critical to me. The fact that there is an ancient slide, when Oceanside, city of Oceanside has recently had a terrible experience dealing with the loss of homes by residents in our city, and the devastation that brought to residents and the fact that, you know, homes were sliding into the backyards of other homes. I would never want to have to go through that again. You know, we can't make people whole. We can try to save as much as possible the homes. We were, you know, our, as soon as we found out about it, and it was a really, it was a really bad rain, plus apparently there was a swimming pool that was apparently leaking. But, you know, the city, city staff went out there and, you know, with machinery in trying to save homes. This community, and I- This community, and I thank you very much for all coming here, especially seniors. This is a very, very tight community of seniors. What you all talked about and how you walk, you know, and going out. My feeling is that people ought to be able to walk in their neighborhoods. Our whole goal ought to be walkability. And this project just does not fit this community.[634.04][634.04](audience cheering) I didn't count how many folks were Oceanside residents versus a Vista. It seemed like certainly there were significant Oceanside residents that are here. I know about Rancho Calaveras, and, you know, I know about Pacifica. And, you know, I thank you for being the good residents, and many of you are volunteers for a lot of city events. I, you know, really thank you for being who you are and for all the experiences that you've had. When Vista did, excuse me, Carlsbad, when Carlsbad did their very, very high-density project that is going to hugely impact, is hugely impacting Oceanside, it was, you know, all we could do was sit there. Even though our staff had made comments on that project, you know which project I'm talking about, right off of College, that very, very high-density, that has huge vacancies, huge vacancies. Can't fill those rooms. Can't sell them, can't rent them, you know. I would not want to do that, you know, because once a city did that to us, I don't feel that we ought to be doing it to other residents. So I see you as residents, as people who, some of our best volunteers live in Vista and in the county, and I just want you to, I want to say that you're welcome here. Welcome to our events. Welcome to helping us in everything that we're able to do because we can't do this without citizen participation. So I am going, I am going to be, if, I think that there is a motion. I am not supporting this project. It is not compatible with the surrounding community.[762.82][762.82](audience cheering) I'm hearing, I'm hearing your concerns about a traffic study that was done two years ago or maybe older that is not relevant anymore, and that really concerns me. Concerns me that in designing this project, you all, the community, the surrounding community was not taken into consideration at all. So I'm voting against the project. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller?
Pardon me. I will say I drive that road very regularly as a shortcut for whatever event happens to be going on in South Vista or U Sports at Lake or whatever it is. And my family uses Costco like 7-Eleven, so...[828.32][828.32](laughter) I got a couple of questions. Sergio, could you put up the map of the site again, please? I've got a question about that. Thank you. The first question I have is, I heard you say the side, we will be putting in sidewalks on both sides of Sky Haven.
Councilmember Feller, that's correct. The project is conditioned to install sidewalk on both sides of Sky Haven and along its Sunset Drive frontage.
The frontage on Sunset, okay. The, so, and then I have another question about the bus turnout there. So in that bus turnout, is there access there through the property?
The graphic shows access to that site, to the bus turnout from the property.
That's that line in the...
That's the sidewalk there, yes.
Okay, so there is access there. And a little further, I guess it would be southwest, as you go southwest past their project, that's open space until you get to the houses on Sky Haven?
Councilmember Feller, I believe you're talking about a parcel immediately south of the project site. It's a privately-owned piece of land that has residential zoning for single-family residences. It's RS-zoned. It appears that that site doesn't have any access that I'm familiar with.
Okay. And so... So my question is, is the developer, will that be a problem putting in your plan that that green belt that's there will be something that would be in perpetuity, so there would be no further request if they sell the project? So I'm, whether it's you or the developer, whoever would like to, if he'd like to come up.
Councilmember Feller, let me clarify one thing. Your previous question, I thought you were talking to the parcel to the south. I believe you're describing, it's approximately 1.4-acre part of the project site that's not being graded, not being developed. So I believe that's what you're describing.
It runs along Sky Haven? Or is it that bottom piece there?
It's the bottom piece there, sir.
I'm talking about Sky Haven.
Could you point at it so they know what you're talking about?
So is it this area here or this area here?
Over on the, not that area. I know you have no control over anything outside the red lines. I'm talking, it seemed to me there was a piece on of property that runs southwest of that piece, if that's north-south. That runs right along Sky Haven.
It's behind houses, and it's a property of...
I'm not sure what he's talking about.
Yes.
Councilmember Feller, you're referring to this piece right here?
Yes. That has, that's somebody else's property?
That's correct. That's a privately-owned piece of land.
Okay, that's part of Rancho Calaveras Mobile Home Park? Okay. Okay, I'm getting a lot of answers.
Yeah, it's a part of this project here.
Probably because, yeah, I apologize, I didn't ask these questions ahead of time. So... That's what I asked you. Can you respond to the green belt as far as in perpetuity?
Okay, so the, let me just identify what we're talking about here. So there's a place where Richard had mentioned about that setback, that 100-foot, and I have no problem designating that as open space as he requested.
Okay. And the reason you're doing the project down northeast there of that is because the slide that is so serious over there under the...
Partly, yes, that's correct. You know, we're staying away from that major slide.
Okay.
There's other reasons why that, that's also 100-foot setback. There's some septic leach lines and that kind of stuff, that there's a setback. But, you know, for accommodation, Richard's been a, you know, a very huge participant in the process here, so I have no problem going ahead and designating that as open space.
Thank you. We're trying to, we try to err on the side of fairness, I believe. I, one other question. What was the price point on these units?
The price point has not been established yet because it's going to be dependent upon what the market is at the time that they're for sale. But it's going to be, you know, probably in the fours, you know?
Okay, thanks.
Four to five, you know?
The real estate experts are helping you out here.
Yeah, I know. Well, I'd love to sell them, I mean, if we're going to build it, I would love to sell them as much as possible, obviously, but because the cost of construction is very, very high.
I understand.
But we try to keep it as affordable as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, but the public input portion has been completed.
Can, I have Jim Knowlton answer? Geotechnically, you're our, what was the guy's name from some San Diego? You're our guy. And I'm going to, I know you've only been doing this about 40 years, so... What, these geotechnical problems, the water drainage and the stability of land can be actually fixed? Is that correct?
Mayor Weiss, city councilmembers, I'm Jim Knowlton, GeoPacifica. I'm your geotechnical consultant. And I've been looking at this project since 1985, when it was originally conceived. And I'll try and be brief because it's not a yes or no, unfortunately. But the reason I'm sitting here before you is that your predecessor councils had finally had enough of landslides destroying homes. 1979, there was a Skylark landslide which destroyed seven to 11 homes. And I was involved in the evaluation and the repair of it. And we're very concerned about landslides. Oceanside has a lot of landslides. There was an original investigation, and when, I've talked to several developers that looked at this property many times, and most of the time, they walked away because it was too expensive to develop. That's one of the reasons why we have the green space there and not a bunch more units there. The geotechnical report had stated that the development would be very difficult and very expensive, and the developer listened. And when this thing goes to grading, that green space will have a deed restriction. Okay, it's recommended in the geotechnical report that no units be built on that, and we will respond and recommend what the geotechnical report says. The landslide two, which they talk about, will be stabilized. They will dig out down on the ground, build this Cherokee, and build it up. And that will stabilize the landslide. I've done, I've seen it many times. I've done it myself on projects also. And the water problem that is present down below is not the water problem that's present on the site. The borings and the investigations that were done did not indicate a lot of water on this site. I'm aware of all of the problems that the other projects have had. I reviewed and approved and inspected the tunnel that was built in Pacifica, and it's been very successful. I mean, it was probably the most cost-effective stabilization of a large ancient landslide that you could probably have. If this project was able to go forward, and they do the grading in response to the recommended geotechnical report, it would be stable.
Okay, thank you.
We're just about out of time.
I'm out of time?
Yes.
Now I know how these people feel that only got two minutes. I'm, I, did you second this, Ryan? I will second it. I will approve this. I think there's, the answers are there. The traffic, traffic on Sunset is busy. I drove it yesterday at about 3 o'clock, 3:30, 4:00, a couple of times, and it was normal. And 48 units does not provide a push for, you know, another thousand cars. It's got the trips, you know, in the 250 to 300 probably. And that's minimal on a street that's as busy as that is. So those are my, that's my statement.
So I have a couple of questions for staff. Is the developer asking to change the zoning to accommodate the higher densities?
Mayor Weiss, no, there is no change in land use or zoning involved with this project.
So it's currently zoned for what the developer's proposing?
It's currently zoned for much more than what the developer's proposing.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, four to one. Sanchez, no.
At this point, we'll go to item 19, which is a public hearing regarding parking regulations. And we'll open the public hearing and start with disclosures with the council.
So, but we have a couple more items that they need to address. So if you'd like to...
I've had staff only.
Staff only. Staff only.
Staff and members of the public.
Ladies and gentlemen, do not approach the city council right now. We still have other...
I think Ryan said staff only.
...that we need to address. Because if you're going to talk, let's go up to the... I'll bring in the lobby, okay?
Mr. Mertz, what are you wearing? You're up, Nathan.
Honorable mayor, councilmembers, Nathan Mertz, Public Works Division Manager. Tonight before you is a resolution establishing regulations, restrictions, and fees for Parking Structure 23 and to eliminate Parking Lot 24A from the inventory. Parking Structure 23 consists of 443 spaces, 81 private spaces, 362 public spaces, over five floors of public parking. Included in that are eight accessible spaces, 23 clean air vehicle spaces, six electric vehicle spaces with an anticipated opening of mid-June 2019. As you may remember, parking meter and beach lot rates were last increased in April of 2017, which aided in beach and pier maintenance costs that continue to increase. In addition to that, city's obligation of maintenance for Parking Structure 23 is estimated to be $182,000 annually. Lot 23 is located just east of the tracks, west of Cleveland Street, south of Civic Center, north of Pierview and Pierview Undercrossing, three blocks to the sand. Staff proposes a $5 per day flat rate, consistent with the adjacent lots just... Staff proposes a five-dollar per day flat rate, consistent with the adjacent lots just west of the parking structure. Those are lots Twenty-Four and Twenty-Four B. The structure will be closed two AM to four AM for maintenance, and the annual beach parking mit, permit would not be allowed in this structure. New rate would go into effect when the structure opens. Staff is also exploring the option of an affordable downtown employee parking permit program to support all the hotel workers and restaurant workers that will be coming online in the near future. Staff anticipates about five-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars in annual revenue, revenue. Additional, this additional revenue can help fund several city initiatives, additional beach and pier maintenance, downtown parking system upgrades, which would include paystations, parking structure counter systems, and wayfinding enhancements for the downtown and beach areas. In addition, we need to offset Parking Structure Maintenance Obligation, which is estimated at a hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars. So with that, staff recommends city council adopt a resolution establishing regulations, restrictions, and fees for Parking Structure Twenty-Three and eliminate Parking Lot Twenty-Four A from the inventory. This concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to address this issue?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, One Twenty-Seven, Sherri Lane. Um, I heard there was eight accessible spaces. Does that mean that it is, uh, disabled spaces? I was wondering for the clarification of that, because that doesn't even re- represent ten percent. We have a aging population, and if you know anything about aging populations, between the aged and the disabled, they have a lot of commonalities. I think that only having eight spaces is lowballing this. It should be at least ten percent to adequately address. Also, the disabled exemption was not addressed in this as well. We have some low-income, fixed-income seniors who are basically living on minimum social security. And they should not be penalized for taking and having to live on minimum social security. I think this is something you need to take into consideration. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll close the public input portion and come back to council. Jimmy, just so you know, there's four-hundred-and-forty-three total spaces. Ten percent will be four-point-four. There's actually eight, so it's almost.
No.
No, that's one percent.
Forty-four.
Forty-four. I'm sorry. So Nathan, what was the number you had?
Eight.
Eight. What, what's the requirement?
That is the requirement.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, and I appreciate the, um, opportunity to have spoken with staff beforehand. I had a lot of questions, and I've actually had more questions, um, since our meeting just a few days ago, a couple of days ago. Pretty much, the, this parking lot, Lot Twenty-Three, was actually a free lot. The other ones that were closer, I guess on the other side, were the ones that were five dollars a day. And, uh, that seemed to make sense, um, in terms of, uh, you know, people wanting to be out and about the entire day, say, beachgoers, um, you know, people who are fishing, you know, whatever. But to not have, uh, a, a program that identi, that, that is specifically for, uh, attracting people to come down to Oceanside to have, you know, to eat, whatever, and, and not spend the whole day, but, you know, to, to expect that they're going to, um, pay five dollars, um, in addition to their meals, um, is, is something that I, I don't see that happening. And I would, this, this, this lot, three-hundred-and-fifty-whatever, this, um, is, is, is to, is replacement, um, uh, for all the, for all the lots that, that, that were, uh, that were space lots, um, parking lots, that are now, you know, we're, we're, we're at development, you know, we're, they've disappeared. And we really need to have, to be able to attract, uh, people to, to come downtown and have and, and eat and do things during the day, who either work here or whatever, um, or, or at least visiting. And, and I, I would actually like to, and I understand that the parking study didn't really take into account who is coming to Oceanside and what would, and, and how we can ensure, uh, that we continue, that we continue to be able to, to urge people to come to, to downtown Oceanside. I understand that the, that the lot is probably going to be opening around, uh, June first or the beginning of June, and so a decision has to be made by the last meeting in May, which would be May twenty-second. I would like to ask staff to, uh, to work on this study to, um, determine, uh, how many people are actually coming, coming, um, to Oceanside, um, who would be attracted to like restaurants and things like that, so that we're not turning people away. Uh, because my biggest thing is to ensure that we continue to get people to come to Oceanside. And especially if it's not, you know, five dollars for, for an hour and a half, two hours, just doesn't seem right. So I'm, I'm asking, um, my colleagues to, um, continue this item until, uh, the la, the second meeting in, in May, which is May twenty-second, um, so to give staff a, a chance to look at this and see, um, how we, you know, how we can accommodate, uh, people who will be coming, um, for less than, say, you know, significant number of hours. Um, so that, and, and I did talk to a few people here, um, asking them, well, what do you think about this? And they were like, you know, you're not going to get Oceanside folks wanting to come down here if they're, if you're asking them to pay five dollars, especially since the, um, permit, it's not going to apply. Um, so I think we need to be able to have a, a, another structure and, and, you know, be able to have, since this is going to be by computer, um, and you, and it's going to be by license plate, you know, you insert your license plate and that's how you get, you know, no, find out how, you know, how you can pay and how much. Um, I'd like to have staff explore the potential for having, um, uh, shorter times, um, and, and how much that would be. This will generate a lot more money at the way it's being proposed than, um, uh, what is needed to be able to maintain it. So I, I'd like to, um, I, I'd like to make the motion that we continue this to May twenty-second and give staff an opportunity, um, to explore things like what Jimmy said and, and, uh, you know, number of handicap. Um, obviously, you can, uh, have others. If you have a, a handicap placard, you can actually, you know, put it on in, in a non-handicap stall, except that it's not going to be as wide. Um, so perhaps we need to look at, you know, how many we would be more, maybe realistic. And also kind of explore the idea of having, um, a separate, um, cost for less than, say, um, you know, the whole, whole day.
Is there a second to that motion? Seeing none, motion fails for lack of second. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Can you bring, put the screen back up that shows the location of the parking lot, please? Got it. So do we current, I don't think, we don't, we don't have any current parking structures where, we have parking lots where we charge, but we don't have any parking structures currently, do we, that we charge a fee to, to park in currently?
That is correct. All the, the other parking structures.
So this will be like the first, first of, you know, the kind of the model we go off of for, for these types of structures. And so, um, are we going to be utilizing, you know, advanced, the most advanced technology so it's easier for code enforcement, easier, you know? I know when I go to malls or parking structures, I put, I would drive in, I push a ticket. When I drive out, I insert a ticket and I pay, you know, and making, making things easy. So is that the type of technology we're going to be using on these parking structures?
Yeah, it'll be easier than even having a gate.
Oh, wonderful. Okay.
Yeah. No gate to clog things up, so.
Got it. Will it, will it show the parking spaces available count? Like, will it have those features in there where the sensors are on the ceiling? Or not yet? That's something we can retrofit later?
Not yet.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Got it. And how did you determine the five dollars? Um, the, the big complaint I have from Oceanside residents and tourists is, look, I can only park two hours. I would pay, but I don't want to just park and move my car every two hours. So I, I think, in my opinion, I think five dollars seems a bit, you know, low, in my opinion. Um, where, where'd you guys come up with that number? How did that come out of, uh, you know, where did staff get that number from?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Rodriguez, the, Councilwoman Sanchez spoke to a downtown parking study that is being wrapped up right now, and through the findings of that downtown parking study, we know a lot of these temporary lots are being eliminated. So knowing that, those long-term lots are going to be gone in a few years once those get developed. And this is going to be one of the, one of the spots in downtown that will service the downtown, but it will also service the beach. Your, your beach parking fills up during the summer, and people are going to be heading east. And that's, this is kind of one of the findings from the study. So that is, that is the determination on having that long-term aspect within this parking lot. And the five-dollar rate was just consistent. In future years, that can change. As costs go up, that can change. We can go to peak, non-peak season rates and even, um, dynamic pricing as, as demand calls for that. Coastal Commission staff thought this was a fair value, actually kind of one of the better values in the area, and it met our needs in terms of cost recovery and generating a little revenue for, for items. So that's, that's where we came up with that, and consistency of what's next to the, this parking structure now as well.
Okay. So if we were to increase the, we can, we can always come back and increase the amount. Do we have to go back through coastal and, and get all these approvals? Or is that something that council can just make a decision on in the future? Or even the city manager? Like, who would have the authority to increase the, the lot rates depending on supply and demand in the city?
Councilmember Rodriguez, yeah, we, we would, when we do a rate increase, if it exceeds our allowance for the year, then we'd have to do a coastal permit for that. So there's small increments. I don't know the exact percentage what we can increase, but if we went above that, it would just be our own, um, permitting process here at the city, and you'd have a coastal development permit to come before council.
So would it make sense to approve a higher amount now, and then we can just roll it out with a lower price and not have to get a permit? And then within our own decision-making, increase it up to that permitted already amount?
I think, to be fair, and, and, um, from what we disclosed to the Coastal Commission staff, we should keep it where it is right now.
Got it. Yeah. Okay. Yes. So it's a lot of work to change that amount.
We can do it on an annual basis. Like I said, last time we raised rates was April of 2017, so.
Okay.
Um, you know, maybe in, in a year or two, as time goes on, we could look at that again as that, as that takes place.
Thank you for that. I move approval of, um, this item.
Councilmember Feller?
Thank you. The, um, the left side of the aisle is trying to drive us out of our cars anyway, so this, I would think that Councilmember Sanchez would be very supportive of getting people out of their cars. We, uh, there's a lot of difference between a surface parking lot like we had and the, um, the, the lots that are in a five-story parking garage, uh, much higher upkeep. And I think it's a, is, it's a fair price for you being able to park in a, in there for twenty-two hours, uh, in a day. Five dollars is, is very good. It's, um, it, it's not ideal. We have, um, the parking structure at, at the transit district that we share is free at this point, and, and actually, it's a disaster a lot of the time, just because it does, it is free, and the people go in there and hide, and, I mean, I've seen some atrocious things inside there, plus, you know, they're doing wheelies on the upper deck and, or whatever you call that. Donuts, that's a different deal. So, uh, I, I'm, I'm happy to second this and, uh, and move it on. Um, I, I think you put a lot of thought and effort into it, Coastal Commission. Uh, we'd have to go back if we wanted to raise it above the five dollars anyway, so we couldn't do that tonight anyway, so, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, four to one. Sanchez, no.
And we will adjourn to a mayor-council workshop at two o'clock on Wednesday, May first, regarding Community Choice Energy. We're adjourned.